Hey, we'll call the meeting to... Hello, can you hear me? Can you turn the mics up a little bit? Check, check, there we go. All right, could we call the meeting to order at six o'clock? Thank you for joining us for the Cloverdale City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael, could you get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you. Alex, any report out in closed session? Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Seeing none, moving on. Any changes or deletions to the agenda? David?
Mayor, there's no changes to the agenda this evening. I do want to note that we have received correspondence on agenda items after the agenda was posted, and we're happy to discuss those when those agenda items come up.
Thank you. We'll move on to B, public comment. Any person wishing to speak on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment on any item not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. You made it.
There we go. Yeah. For the report, the Jefferson School had walk and roll on February 7th, and from the 7th to today, they had pre-sale tickets for wristbands for $29 for the Citrus Fair. And also, the Washington is trying to get the eighth graders' baby photos and their vote for best stuff for the yearbook. For the high school last week, the winter sports celebrated their senior night, and the girls' basketball team moved on to play in their playoffs, in which yesterday won. Also, we had spirit week, in which Monday was hippie day, Tuesday was Legally Blonde Day, in which you wear all pink, and today was Valentine's a day attire. Lastly, all students from all three schools won't have school on Thursday, Friday, and Monday because of Professional Development Day and President's Day.
Great, thank you. Yada, any questions, comments? All right. Moving on to E, proclamations. E1 is Black History Month proclamation. Is there anyone here that would like to read it? Seeing none, I will.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, declaring February 2024 Black History Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other peoples of African descent. Whereas the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sponsored a National Negro History Week in 1926, choosing the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. The event inspired schools and communities nationwide to organize local celebrations, establish history clubs, and host performances and lectures, becoming a month-long celebration in 1976. Whereas since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. Whereas Black History Month honors the contributions of Black Americans to U.S. history, including Madam C.J. Walker, who was the first U.S. woman to become a self-made millionaire, George Washington Carver, who'd drive nearly 300 products from the peanut, Rosa Parks, who sparked the Montgomery Bus Boycott and galvanized the civil rights movement, and Shirley Chisholm, the first Black American woman elected to the U.S. House of Representatives. Whereas the Black History Month 2024 theme, African Americans and the Arts, highlights the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. Whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Whereas the City of Cloverdale continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions to our community. And whereas the City of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that I, Todd Landz, do hereby declare February 2024 as Black History Month in Cloverdale and encourage all citizens to recognize, celebrate, and honor the rich and diverse contributions by Black Americans to the arts, dated February 14th, 2024, so ordered myself, the mayor. So we always have someone that is a recipient of our proclamations, and tonight, we're going to talk about someone that is not here to receive it. Michael Driver was born July 28th, 1954, and raised in Newark, New Jersey. Mike attended Eastside High School, where he played basketball, and he attended Seton Hall for a year before he joined the Army in 1977 through 1980. Mike moved to Sonoma County in the 80s and finally moved to Cloverdale in 2003. There, he raised three children, Tamaraan, Catherine, and Desmond. They moved, it's funny, they moved basically across the street from us, and their kids are my children's age. And every day, you'd hear the basketball dribbling up our street. Going to the park every single day is like clockwork. And you could always tell who was dribbling by the length of the dribble, whether it was them or their daughter or sons, depending, because they were a little shorter than their dad was at the time. Catherine, starting out, I mean, since they were born, their dad would walk up and down the street every day. And it's a cool thing to watch. As you keep going, you'll hear that he was a big coach. So Mike coached basketball in Cloverdale for approximately 15 years. His knowledge of the game was unmatched, and it showed through his many winning seasons. Even when he wasn't coaching, he was still keeping stats and offering advice. You know, he always made this one comment. He'd sit in the stands, and you'd hear him out of everyone in the whole place. You'd go, "Aw, man, come on!" When someone goes to do something wrong. He had no inside voice. His inside voice was always out. And he would sometimes tell you things you didn't want to hear about your kid, but you knew that he did it with so much respect because he knew the game, and he knew what they should do better, and we all loved him for it. He was great. Every game, he was always there, and he knows every stat for every kid that's played in the last 15 to 20 years. Mike has recently taken, had recently taken on the role as the announcer for the CHS Boys Basketball Team. Unfortunately, Mike passed away unexpectedly on February 4th, and he will be greatly missed. Mike loved his country. He loved basketball. He loved Cloverdale. He loved the Eagles. But he loved his children the most. He'll be remembered as a great father, a great friend, a mentor, and a coach. Tonight, I asked his daughter, who is here from college, to hold a celebration of life for her father to accept this award. So Catherine, would you please come forward? You have anything you want to say?
I'm honored to be here and to accept this proclamation, so thank you, Todd.
So if you look around, there's a lot of people here to support you. Your dad, I couldn't get thousands of them in here. There's thousands that don't want to be here, you know that. But with a couple hours' notice, there's a lot of people he touched, and they're here to support you, and support you, and be here to accept this award with you. So, you guys mind taking a picture?
Girls. Whoever wants to. Girls, get in here. You're more important than I am. Baya, you played, come on. Get in here. Everybody's more important than I am. Mike, were you good? We need to get it tighter. Don't be afraid to leave if you guys want to leave now. The rest of them, it's totally okay. There we go. I know. Yeah. One of those is my own, I know better. Thank you guys for coming. Okay. Moving on, G, consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Be pulled. Seeing none, anyone from the public to pull an item? Seeing none.
Second.
All right. So you have Councilmember Walter for the first and Vice Mayor for the second.
Thank you. Councilmember Morganster?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Landz?
Aye. Passes 4-0 with one absent. All right, new business. Aye, mid-year financials report for fiscal year 2324. David, is that you?
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to introduce this item tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to our Finance Director, Suzy Holmes, to walk you through a detailed PowerPoint presentation on the mid-year budget. Just by way of introduction, every year, we try to do a kind of a check-in on the budget for council's review. It gives you a snapshot in time and a budget picture for, you know, really the first half of the annual fiscal year. Our annual fiscal year starts July 1, and ends June 30. This snapshot, this mid-year review, is going to cover the budget period between July 1st and December 31st. And the update, in part, really focuses a lot on our general fund, and the agenda report in your packet, you know, provides a fairly detailed analysis of kind of where we stand from a mid-year perspective. But the mid-year is also intended to give the council an update on a host of other funds, and Ms. Holmes is going to talk a little bit about that. And so without further ado, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Suzy to walk us through her PowerPoint presentation. Do want to note, in addition to the agenda report, there is actually a mid-year budget report included in your packet that has a lot more detail on each of the funds that council may be interested in discussing tonight. So, Suzy?
Thank you, David. Okay, so as David mentioned, we're going to be looking at the first six months of the fiscal year 2324 to kind of figure out. It's, we're going to just get a snapshot in time of where we are. We're going to talk about the general fund balance first. I wanted to kind of just first put it out there that the general fund balance is actually, it's your cash plus any accounts receivables, less any accounts payables. And so it's basically what you have available that you can use, right? So that's where you, where the fund balance comes from. Also, because of the timing of when we receive our tax payments, and the majority of our tax payments come December, January, February, March, and after, we kind of, you need to have a reserve in your unrestricted fund balance in order to cover the expenses, because you're still going to have expenses from, you know, July till December. And so you use that unreserved balance, and that is a cash flow. Just a little bit of a little explanation before we jump into it. This first slide shows what the budget was. I know, I know, it's difficult to read. The, the, this shows all of the funds that are budgeted. This shows how we budgeted our beginning fund balance, and then the expenses, the revenues, increase or decrease, and then where we expected to end. When we did this budget originally, we expected that we were going to use 804,000 some odd dollars from our reserve balance. That's how we were going to balance the budget. Since then, we have, council has approved the budget amendments. After the budget was approved, and the total budget amendments were 1.2 million to the general fund, the majority of that is projects that were budgeted to happen last year but were carried over to this year. That really doesn't affect your fund balance because you didn't spend it last year, so that fund balance rolls over to the next year, and then you spend it this year, it should have a zero effect. But also, there were COLAs and there were a couple other, like an auto licensing. Some, sorry, I can't even read it myself. But there were a couple other budget amendments that happened throughout the fiscal year, so far year-to-date. Based on that information, we are, our general fund balance is now expected to be at $8 million, the beginning fund balance, and before it was at $6 million. So there's $2 million either in revenue that was, that is expected, wasn't expected, or two, or a combination of revenue and expenses that make up the $2 million. Also, this, this shows the fund balance broken down by assigned, committed, and then the unassigned. This is how we expected as of July 1st, that it would, we, how our fund balance would be broken up. And then the next slide shows as of the, as of June 30th, 2024, the same assigned and committed, and then the unassigned is less because we're using more of the, the fund balance. We do want to point out that this, this calculates to an 18% unassigned fund balance and an overall 55% fund balance, which council should be very proud of the way that they've been spending their money because that's, that's a really good situation to be in, especially when we don't have all the revenues, and we expect to receive more revenues in the second half of the year than we did the first, so.
And Suzy, if I can, just real quickly, we really wanted to take a little time on this particular slide, because the reserve balances has been something that, over several years, have been built up because of the council's prudent financial perspective and practices. What you see here is, again, the both assigned and committed. Every year, council has, when we brought the audit forward and it showed there were either expenditures less than what were budgeted or revenues that were greater than what were forecast, that that overage amount is brought back to council for transfer into your reserve accounts. And it's usually done very judiciously based on the council's reserve policy. So over the last five years, the council has approved transfers into both the assigned accounts and the committed accounts. So we've been able to build up the accounts for vehicle replacement, building maintenance and repairs, compensated leave balances or absences, so that's when a staff member retires or leaves the city, equipment replacement, and then there are some remaining ARPA funds that remain to be expended. One I wanted to note is that you'll see there, this is a CIP sewer. The, those funds have been approved for allocation by the council for drainage improvements on the Times Square property. So it's very likely, at some point in the near future, those funds will be requested by the developer to make some of those public improvements. And those were things approved by council, but right now, those funds are parked in your assigned funds, and that's why they're assigned. Likewise, when Suzy brings the audit forward, and there's a discussion about the additional revenue, council, based on the reserve policy, will transfer into usually a combination of the emergency reserve fund and contingency reserve fund. So what we've seen is that the balance of those funds committed and signed increase over time. And those are really kind of, the way I think you want to think about those is our, that's, that's our savings account. It's our, you know, fund that we would draw upon if needed in an emergency, or if, for example, we need to make an immediate purchase of a new vehicle, we could use, council has to authorize use of those assigned funds to purchase a new vehicle. So again, this, I want to showcase this because it does reflect the council's prudent financial practices. You've done a great job of building up this fund balance. But what you're going to see with the next slide is that unassigned balance, which is kind of that unencumbered fund balance, decline over time. So, at least with the, in the current budget. So, Suzy, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. I think that was pretty much the entire topic that I wanted to discuss on fund balances at this time. But I did want to also point out that the city's online budget book is available on our website and our transparency portal. If you click on the Finance Department, if you, I placed a link in this one just so that you can kind of get an idea, and it's not going to, oh, there. So this is actually on our website, and at any point, you can click on any of these links, and they will take you directly to that budget. I'm going to click on the City Council budget, just so that you can get an idea. If you scroll down, you can see what the 2023, well, the actual for the past four years, plus where we're at today and our budget. So you can kind of get an idea of where, where we are budget-wise. At any point, this updates every night at midnight. If you want more information, you can click on the little parrots, and it will, it'll tell you that this is miscellaneous contract services, promotions, citywide dues. It breaks, breaks the budget down by line item. I just wanted to point that out. It's on our website. It's super easy, too. It's something that we worked really hard to make it easy to access. So I think that that's something that I just wanted to point out. It also has the fund balances that we just looked at, so. I'm going to stop sharing and share the other screen again. When we're talking about the general fund revenue, you can see that the general fund revenue is currently at 50. fund revenue is currently at fifty-three percent, uh, which is, um, higher than normal. But also, you can see that, um, like, the property taxes are at thirty-five percent. In the property taxes, we get one installment in December, and then we get another in April and another in May, and so we, we should be at thirty-three percent. It looks like, um, we are, um, currently, this year, we have received six percent more year-to-date than we did last year at this same time. So if things continue, then we should see an overall six percent increase in property tax. The general taxes are also at thirty-five percent, and these include sales tax, cannabis tax, utility user tax, franchise and, um, business taxes. The sales tax, um, are expected to be seventy thousand dollars less than what we actually budgeted, but at the same time, higher than we've seen in past years. In, um, nineteen twenty, the sales tax took a huge dip, and since then, it's been, um, coming back at a steady pace, and we are almost back to pre-nineteen twenty, uh, rates. So, so, um, we're doing, from my perspective, I think we're doing well, um, but we did budget seventy thousand dollars more. Also, the cannabis is taxes less than what we expected, but of course, when we did the budget, we also hadn't done the, um, decrease in the tax rate yet, so that's, that was to be expected. Um, the operating transfers in, those include the ad valorem tax, um, for, um, for retirement costs, and also, um, the redevelopment admin fee, and the redevelopment admin fee comes at the end of the year, so we should be, we should be good. I'll just go through and point out some of the bigger things. The charges for services are already at ninety-eight percent of our, of what we budgeted, and those are based on an increase in building plan check revenue, um, which is already two hundred and thirty percent of what we budgeted. And then also, the intergovernmental revenue, those are grant funds that we received, we expected to receive them last year, but we actually received them this year after we finished the basketball court, the pickleball court, and I think those are the two. They might have all been basketball. The license and the permits are at seventy-four percent of our total budget. So again, um, these are because of encourage, uh, an increase in encroachment and building permits. I believe that we are doing a better job of the past few years of capturing all of the expenses that are associated with these, um, with these different permits and licenses because of OpenGov, um, it, they're automatically coming across, there's, there's no, um, department that's manually billing, it's, it's just, it's, it's automatic, and it's, I feel like the ease of use for, um, the permittees to apply is also, um, something that's causing them to, to be more apt to apply.
So with this one, Susie, I don't mean to interrupt, but with charges for service, if, if that means we're getting more permits and things coming through, then that's kind of like a pass-through, almost like we're getting reimbursed for that, even though we go over on budget, what we budgeted, we're still getting more money if it does.
Exactly. Yep, yep, it's, it covers all staff time and, and, yeah, exactly. Um, let's see. Look at the, go to the next screen, and this is the property tax, and this is the period of July through December, just, just so that, um, everything is on, you know, an even thing, that you can see how the property tax grows each year. And, and again, we're at, whoops, we are at six percent higher than we were last year at this time. This is just, uh, a, a chart that shows how we're doing. Again, our sales tax is higher than it has been, however, not, again, not as much as we budgeted. The excise tax, you can see that that's significantly decreased, and then the franchise fees, they are higher than normal, but again, um, we received, we received a payment earlier than we normally would, um, and everything else is just kind of the same. It's the same with business licenses. We haven't received more business licenses than we did last year, it's just that we received the payment earlier.
And Susie, can, if you can, real quickly, back up. One, one item just to, to take note of is, uh, the cannabis excise taxes. You, you see a, a decline, uh, between, uh, twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, of nearly, uh, a hundred thousand dollars, and the, the, that, it was due to a, a policy change of council by reducing the, uh, percentage of the ca, the cannabis excise tax. So, um, again, that's for, uh, the, a, a period of six months. You see a, a decline of, of about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. If you're to kind of, you know, uh, interpolate that over a year, uh, you know, that, that, that could be more like a two hundred thousand dollar annual, uh, decrease in revenue from cannabis excise tax, uh, due to a, a policy change in, in that, uh, imposed cannabis excise tax.
We'll switch over to the general fund expenditures. So the general fund, um, covers city administration, police, uh, parks and facilities, building and engineering, planning and community development. Those are, those are the majority of the, um, general fund expenditures. The transfers out to other funds that you see there, close to the bottom, that is, um, anything that is streets-related, that our street tax does not cover, then a general fund contribution is made to, um, to zero that out. You can't have a negative balance at the end of the fiscal year in any of the funds. But again, you can kind of see just by going down here that we are at forty-eight percent of the expenses, and we were at fifty-three percent of the revenue, so, um, I think we're in a really good shape, and we're, um, yeah, I, I think, I think we're doing well there. The next slide. Kind of shows where the majority of the expenses are paid out of, and of course, uh, wages, benefits, and, um, salaries are always the he, the heaviest, and then, uh, contracted services, but it, you can kind of see by the pie where, where the expenses are, and, and, you know, what your, um, yeah. The next slide breaks down the same expenses, but by department or departmental. So we have a city administration, which includes finance, uh, city councils, uh, city manager, city clerk, um, insurance, risk, and, uh, IT, and then we have police protection, and then parks and facilities, and planning, and building and engineering.
And for the bene, benefit, uh, council member Walter, I know you, you always ask the questions, what percentage of the, uh, expenses come from the police department? And the, the percentage reflected on the slide is fifty, fifty-two percent.
Right, this, this shows how our, um, fund balance has increased since two thousand sixteen. You can see that we were with the unassigned, committed, and, um, assigned or restricted, we were at maybe two million, and now we're, whoops, uh, now we're close to eight million in total. So I just kind of wanted to show that, that's what I was saying earlier, when I was saying that council has done a great job of just making sure that there's, um, that there's fund balance available, um, for use. When we are looking at public works and the revenue associated with the public works department, there's, um, gas tax, and then there's SB one, which is essentially a road tax, um, then we have measure M street tax. All, all of these look low, however, I just want to point out that the gas tax is always delayed by at least one month. The SB one, or the road maintenance, is, uh, delayed two months, um, and then measure M street tax, uh, we're missing three quarters, so that's paid quarterly, and we've received one quarter.
And if, if I can, just to add to, uh, Susie's discussion on this item, the, I think this is a really useful slide. I know from council's perspective, there's always an interest in how much funding is available for, for road improvements, and, and I think this, this slide really highlights the limited budget we have for, for street improvements. Uh, again, of that eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars we have in the budget, uh, almost three hundred thousand of that is, transfers in from your general fund, and then the other sources are those dedicated, uh, you know, either county taxes, uh, or state taxes, or gas taxes that are allocated, you know, by the, by the state of California to the city. So, um, the, not to mention that those, those expenses and are the, the, these budget amounts cover, uh, staffing expenses. So those are part, part of that, that expense that you're seeing, it covers the staff's time that are dedicated to filling potholes, repairing streets, putting up new stop signs, et cetera. So it just is kind of i- indicative of the, the relative limited amount of, of budget revenue that is available, uh, for, for street and road improvements. And so just want to kind of point that out. Council, of course, can opt to put more general fund in there to, into, into road improvements, uh, but obviously you got to balance that against the, the, the other budgetary interests, uh, that you have in light of, you know, our fund balance, so.
Yeah, and as David mentioned, the transfers in are, um, from the general fund, and also, um, a small portion is from the ad valorem tax to cover the retirement for employees that are, that fall within these departments. The expenses that are associated with public works are at thirty-five percent, and, um, the majority of expenses for streets and storm drains will likely come later, for sure cemetery, come later in the, um, in the season, right? So we're not going to be doing it all through the winter, but come spring is when you're going to start ramping up, and that's when you're going to start seeing the expenses. So I fully expect that this will be at a hundred percent by the time, um, we get to the end of the year. And then, so, talking about the water enterprise, when we're looking at the, um, charges, we have, of course, the charges for water, we're at fifty-six percent. Normally, a normal year is fifty-eight percent, so we're a little bit lower than what is normal, but then we haven't really been normal for a while, right? Because we've been doing, we've had surcharges, and then we had the surcharges removed, and we didn't have penalties, and now we have penalties, so we're, we're kind of, um, in, in this, trying to figure out what our new normal is. So we're, but we're at fifty-six percent, uh, likely January, February, March, April, we're not going to use much water, so you're, you should expect that we're, we won't see, you know, fifty percent the next, for the second half. Other revenues, um, include water turnoffs and ons, and water hydrant inspections, and things like that. The transfers in are, again, from the ad valorem tax. This is to cover, uh, the re, the retirement tax for, uh, anybody that fall, for the employees that fall or have wages that come out of the water department. When you look at the water usage charges for July through December, you can see that there's, um, a large increase in the, in the actual water usage, but before, we would have had, um, surplus, or not surplus, I'm sorry, surcharge. We would have had a surcharge, uh, fee, which is not shown on this slide. This is just simply water uses charges, so you can kind of see where, where we've, where we've come from and where we're going. When we look at the, um, expenses, um, again, we're only looking for the first six months, right? So we're at total water expenditures of sixteen percent, but we also know that we have huge, um, water and distribution, uh, projects that are aligned to come up, but the second half of the year, including the water meter installs and, and all that. It's, it's just a little bit slow. The, this breaks it up again, salaries and benefits are at fifty-six percent, and services and supplies are at thirty percent. Look at the sewer enterprise, their charges are right at forty-nine percent. Their charges are, um, uh, they're easier to predict because it's a flat fee, right? So there, it's not based on usage, it's not based on, it's just a flat fee for the sewer charge. And then this shows the different types of revenue, so you can kind of see that there's an increase. We also had the ten percent increase in the rate that happened July first, so that's why you're seeing an increase. Sewer enterprise expenditures, um, the total expenditures are at twenty-nine, but you can see that there's all this construction that's gon, that's going to happen, and then there's going to be services and supplies associated with those construction projects. So by the time we get to the end of the year, we will have caught up. It looks like their salaries and benefits might be a little bit low, so we might see a little bit of a decrease in, in that at the end of the year. And then again, this one, the salaries and benefits are at sixty-five percent, and services and supplies are at thirty-five, but by the end of the year, when you do the con, the, um, construction projects, then everything will kind of level out. Airport enterprise, uh, we're at fourteen percent of the revenue, uh, the, the real revenue, it's because of this grant that's up there that we haven't started the project yet, but we do have the grant revenue and the expenses budgeted. But the real revenue is fuel sales and rent and royalties. The fuel sales are at forty percent, but that's pretty typical, I think, um, based on when people are flying, it's not when it's raining and cold. I'm sorry, uh, the transfers in are from the general fund, and they are to cover two things, um, the ad valorem tax, any portion of the, like, if you have to have a match to your grant, the airport typically doesn't make enough money to cover that, so any deficit would be covered by, um, a general fund, uh, contribution. We, we try to, we try to wait a couple years and make sure that all the grant funds have been received before we actually transfer in the funds to the airport, um, with a, due to, you know, it's due to the general fund, and then the general fund has a thing saying, a receivable, saying it's due from the airport. So we do that for a couple years, just to make sure that we don't do a contribution that isn't necessary.
And, and, uh, on, on that topic, we today received a, a check from the, the state of California, approximately forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this was for the, the taxiway project, which we completed almost two years ago, so it, uh, it's just. So it's just indicative of sometimes how long it takes to get reimbursed, you know, once the project's complete, filing all the paperwork, all the certificates of completion, and then how long it takes to actually process, the state process that paperwork and issue payment. So that's not reflected here because it came in after the December 31st. But this is something we can kind of look at more closely and bring back to, like the Public Works and Facilities Subcommittee to give a little more update on the budget impact, especially to the general fund from the airport.
We look at the expenses, the total airport expenses are at five. Really, there aren't a lot of expenses. The expenses are purchasing the fuel that we sell, and then any capital improvement projects. So you can see that here's the capital improvement project that was budgeted with the grant funds on the previous slide. And once that capital improvement plan, I mean, if that's completed by the end of this fiscal year, then we would be at 100% of our expenses. So just a brief overview is that revenues are expected to meet or exceed the budgeted amounts for fiscal year '22, '23. The expenses are expected to meet the currently budgeted amounts. And the fund balances will be updated when the financial, when the audited financials are available. I did also want to just note, since we talked about the audited financials, normally I would have liked to have had those here tonight as well. But there's a new legislation that now the auditor has to have their audited by a CPA. So it's taking additional time. And it's just trying to find somebody that can, you know, look at the auditor's audit and approve it. So I do expect it'll be here either at the next meeting or the meeting right after that, depending on how soon he can get someone to look at it. And I'm willing to take any questions.
Who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, Susie. And who's the auditing firm that we have now? Is Terry back?
Yes, it's Terry Craig.
And this is his first year back?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Susie, thank you very much. The only thing I have is that's just being one of the newer council members up here. I would like to set aside some time to either sit down with David or you and kind of break that down a little more. I know that's a brief explanation. There's a lot of info there. And I would like to personally get a little better grasp on it. So I'll be in contact with you or with David, and we can sit down. And I think even with myself or council member Morgan Stern, and, I mean, you guys run this by us every year. And I'm picking things up, but I'd like to have a little more information on it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit with you. Just let me know a date or a time that works for you, and we'll make sure that it's.
Thank you very much. And Mayor, members of council, on that topic, just in terms of the, learning more about the budget, our finance director has set a budget schedule for staff to literally walk through every single one of the funds that were identified on that initial list. We go through both the anticipated revenues, but also line item by line item, the expenses. And I'd like to provide the opportunity for council members, if there's a particular fund that you're interested in, you know, for example, Public Works or Water, we can get you the calendar, and we can, you know, we can only have two of you maximum. But you could sit in the meetings with staff as we walk through the development of those budgets. And I think that would be really helpful because you can see the machinations that staff go through to, you know, develop and talk about all the, you know, the line item expenses, how we forecast, where we're going to land at the end of the fiscal year, what projects we're going to complete, what stat, you know, where we're going to. There's always a, the challenge is always, where are we going to land with a particular project on the expense side? Because, you know, going up to June, we're doing work, but we may not get those final invoices until July or August. So we're trying to do our best to kind of guess where we're going to end. And we, you know, we put a lot of what we call budget science into it. But there's, sometimes it's a wag. And so, you know, we're doing our best. But I think it would be helpful for council to sit down with staff as we walk through some of these budgets. I would, I think it's probably too much of your time if you want to do all of them. But certainly, if there's any particular funds that you're interested in, let me or Susie know. We'll get you those dates on your calendar. And come sit in City Hall with us in the conference room and literally walk through the budget development process. I think it'd be really helpful for council members. And, you know, it'll help inform you when we actually bring the budget forward.
Thank you, David. That's exactly what I was looking for, line by line. When you said it, I was like, we can go line by line. And I mean, hate to say it, I don't have the experience on the budget that you do. But I want to, you know, and I don't think, it's going to take a while to get that experience. But for me personally, to have that line by line, then I'm going to, you know, be able to understand a lot of these presentations. I think it'd work perfect. So thank you very much.
I also have that available in a spreadsheet. I'm happy to share it with you. If you want the whole thing, let me know. Otherwise, I can break it down by department or by, you know.
I think, I think like David's saying, is we, you know, pick out a fund that we, and just work on it and get to know it right there. So that's where I'm at. So thank you.
Just real quick, one of the tasks that I'm assigned with is the revenue side. And like for building permits, for example, it's really difficult because you don't know if it's going to be a good year or a bad year. So that's where you'll see some fluctuations in the numbers.
Susie, I had one question. Near the beginning of the presentation, we talked about the unassigned. You said we're at about an 18% reserve currently. What do cities usually carry? So like if we wanted to look at the budget and say, I wanted to go pave a road this year and take a little bit out and knock that percentage down to 12%.
Well, so different cities have different, I mean, I've seen everywhere from 15% to 30%. Typically, when we do the budget, we try to keep it between 25 and 30. And then that, we try to keep it at 25 minimum, and then that kind of gives you five to work with, you know, if you want to add something when we're doing the budget. But I would say a comfortable spot is 25.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I'm going to open it up to the public. Does anyone want to make a question, comment, concern about the budget you've seen? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Other comments or anything else?
Mayor, council members, the action staff's requesting tonight is just acceptance of the report. If you, just for record, want a motion to accept the report, that would be great for the.
Do we need a motion to accept it? Is that what it is?
May I make a motion that we accept the mid-year financial report as presented this evening?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. For the record. You open up the public. Anyone want to make any comments? Seeing none, go ahead.
For the record, that was initiated by Councilmember Walter, correct? Okay. The microphone is off, so I couldn't hear you. Councilmember Morgan Stern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
That was an aye. Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 4-0 with one absent. Okay, aye two, initial preserve funding request to Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District for initial public access, operation, and maintenance improvements for the Soda Springs Ranch Open Space.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to introduce this item and then turn it over to our parks team to give you a more detailed presentation on this agenda item tonight. Joining us, in addition to Kevin Thompson here at the dais, is our Park Superintendent Hector Galván and Ken Wells, who is the president of the Redwood Trails Alliance and who's been very integral in helping the city address, you know, good management practices for our open spaces. He's somebody who's worked with us, particularly with Porterfield Creek. And we asked for his technical assistance with respect to Soda Springs Ranch. So a little bit of background, the Sonoma County Ag and Open Space, the Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District, our Ag and Open Space, purchased the Soda Ranch property, you know, using tax funds. And then, you know, they, as part of that purchase, transferred the property to the city for ultimately operation and maintenance. The entirety of the 208 acres of land was transferred to the city in August. And as part of that transfer, the conservation easement was recorded. That kind of set out the, you know, what can be constructed or developed or improved on that property. Ultimately, the Ag District, Ag and Open Space District's mission is to, you know, protect and preserve open space. So the conservation easement is reflective of that mission. Upon acquisition, we worked with the Redwood Trails Alliance and Mr. Wells to help us develop a plan to be able to open the park for public use, but also to help staff with developing an operation and maintenance program for the park. The Ag and Open Space District maintains what's referred to as an initial public access, operation, and maintenance fund. And the action we're seeking tonight is council support for a funding request to the Board of Directors of the Ag and Open Space District to enable the city to be able to construct the improvements that would enable the park to be open for public access in accordance with the conservation easement that has been recorded on the property. So I will pause there. Our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, is going to walk through a presentation, providing an overview of the items that were suggesting council support, requesting funding for from the Ag and Open Space District in terms of improvements and also staffing to, you know, support opening that park up to public use. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Hey Hector, you want to come on up? We're going to do a team approach here tonight. Thanks for the introduction, David. Mike, can you go to the next slide? Kind of introduce the.
I just wanted you to be aware, I'm having a little bit of technical issues, as most people in the audience can tell. So some of the screen might be, might see me moving things around just so you can see the full slide.
Not working.
Just wanted you to be aware.
So we already introduced the team, and Ken's here in the front row next to Hector. So next slide, please. Just for those in the audience, I think everyone knows where the location of the new preserve is. Just west of City Park. You can see on the map here where it's located. Next slide. So I'm going to have Hector walk through the, Hector and Ken walk through what we've come up with on the things that we're going to need to get the park open. And take it away, Hector.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next slide, Mike.
So just on this slide here, the one before it, Mike. There's, I think there's one before it. Proposed improvements. So this tax includes street improvements at the Second Street entrance to the preserve along with closing unnecessary roads, ranch roads. And as you can see there in the image, this is, you're looking at Second Street. That yellow line right there is, our proposition is to extend some ADA accessibility from the existing western entrance of the Second Street City Park over to the park. Again, this is with a goal in mind to alleviate some of the traffic flow and to encourage folks, residents, to park at the Second Street City Park and walk, walk or over to the park. This, of course, is going to entail installing about 325 feet of sidewalk. That yellow line right there, you see? And, yeah, and that's the reason why the cost is where it's at, pretty up there.
Slide, Mike.
Now, I'm going to turn the multi-use trails development over to Ken Wells.
Thank you, Hector and David and Kevin. Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Ken Wells. My title is the Trails Director for the Redwood Trails Alliance. Quick side note, I actually understood Susie's presentation, which is sort of crazy because my history is doing a lot of what David does. But my retirement job is doing what we're doing now. And so I'm going to be a little more excited than maybe I would be with a budget. But that said, this is really exciting. You have a gem of a piece of property now. And we had just a great time looking it over. This will comp, I'm going to give a little bit of a social comment here on the land because we've been on it now, and I want to share with you some of the things that I think are really exciting for the city. Porterfield Creek Preserve has wonderful canyons, the creek, and it's a very enclosed, and you feel really in nature. The Soda Springs Ranch has a complimentary experience. Open fields, meadows, hilltops where you can look over the valley and over the city. So these two parks are going to be just wonderful, wonderful assets for the city. So I just want to start with that. I'm really excited for what you have here. And so it was a lot of fun to be able to be participant in starting to develop this idea. And so diving into the details of the property, the lighter ranch, the folks that were there before did a good job of building ranch roads. They're in pretty good shape. They don't need a lot of work. They need some maintenance. But to be compared to some of the other ranches I think we've all experienced around the area, sometimes the owners don't necessarily take a lot of care in the way they construct roads. Point being, the black lines, and I assume that the council can see what I'm seeing, because I'm going to be looking at the screen here. Just to give you a definition of what we're looking at, the blue outline is the property. The black lines in this particular show are the ranch roads. These are roads that an ATV, most likely a maintenance truck, can actually access these. The orange lines, and it's sort of hard to tell for me, but there's yellow lines and orange lines. The orange lines are spurs or pieces of the ranch road system that don't really support a recreational trail system. They're places that go off the property. And I want to call out specifically the lower right corner, which is the east, southeast corner of the property. You'll see a long orange line there. It's noted RD 1399. That's its length. Thank you. Thank you very much. That particular piece is actually an access road that goes around the property line, which property owners do regularly. However, it is also right across the fence line from a bunch of houses and neighbors. And my experience is, there's two things I deal with when I'm dealing with trails. Water, and how do I control it, and people. And how do I make everybody happy as best we can? And one of the ways we can do that is not have a new series of people coming in behind your house. We all know what that feels like. So what we've suggested for the proposal is to actually put gates on those, on that road. I'm going to focus on that because that's an example of everything else in the park. So the closed roads are going to be closed by putting up vegetation or even a split rail fence, something like that, to tell people, this is not a trail. In this particular case, we want to provide the fire department and the other folks that have to have access, emergency access, those are still going to be maintained as accessible for a vehicle, but not part of the park system. I want to kind of call that out because it's part of the important thing here is to make sure that we accommodate the community and make sure that we mitigate any potential concerns early on. And we address them, and don't try to, you know, don't miss out on the fact that this is a very big positive for the city. But in a neighbor, this is going to be something new. So let's make it as accommodating as we can to that part of our community. So I'm just bringing that up because it's important, and we want to make sure that we address that as we move forward. So with that said, there's two gates on that road. That's going to be maintained for emergency access. However, it won't be part of the park system. We've done something similar at the other, mostly on the north side. There are spurs that went either off the property or down for logging and various things like that. So we want to close those off, too. things like that. So we want to close those off too, let them re, restore themselves and become basically back to nature. Meanwhile, the black road, the black lines will be the maintenance roads available to the staff to be able to get to things. So that's one conversation of, of what we're talking about. And now I want to just sort of dive into the specifics of this particular slide are that what we're proposing are just three different trails. Because this, you have such a great system of roads already. And in my world, roads are roads and trails are the, they're a little bit narrower and more personal. Um, but in, in actuality, mo- most parks would call those trails as well. The black lines that are roads are double width, right? They're, so you can get a vehicle on them. But it's for purposes, as we go into the future, we'll be calling those trails. But what, for purposes of planning, they're already done. So we don't have to talk about spending much money on them to make them, uh, usable for maintenance staff as well as the community for, for park trails. Uh, the last thing I want to say about this particular slide is if you, let's see, we'll start from the far, uh, the west side. Uh, thank you. There's a little back and forth, back and forth, a switchback trail. If we add that to the, thank you very much. Um, if we add that to the existing system of road, we can have a loop. So people can go up and either, and this is going to be the furthest back. This is going to be one of our long, long runs. This, if you're a runner, thank you, thank you. Exactly right. So you're going to be able to get a couple of miles in. Now moving, let's go down to the middle one. Uh, Mike, is that right? Thank you Mike. Um, that one, thank you. That is a middle loop. So now by adding just a small little piece of, of track through here, we can link up more of the existing, uh, tracks that are there and create a smaller loop. And so then there's options and you can make figure eights. And if you want to do a long run and go out for hours, you can do it here. If you want to just go out and get to the top of the ridge and go back and do whatever you want to do, you can do that as well. So I, I was really, um, pleased with the ability to generate a lot of opportunities with very little investment in terms of on the ground impacts. Uh, that'll be one of the issues that we'll be developing in the future is, okay, you have to do your environmental reviews. What are the kind of impacts? We're doing very little impact in terms of the trail construction and the trail development here. So the last trail I want to call out is right next to the parking lot. If we, if Mike, if you can help me there, it's, it's called Road 204. So what we want to do is here is provide, this is going to be the Second Street entrance. It'll also be an ADA parking area. And by, I'll, by adding that particular trail, we can get people back into the, starting into the park right away. They won't have to walk along the side, along the property line. They can go into that experience right away. So that, that was a simple addition that, that gets you into the, into the trail system without very much effort. So what this slide is showing and what I've hopefully described is both a legend of what we're looking at as well as the trail system, uh, that we're proposing. And if Mike will go on to one more slide and I'm going to give, give it back to Hector in a second here. But what, this is just to call out what we would suggest are really nice initial improvements to a park system. I mentioned earlier, we have viewpoints. We've identified 11 spots where you could put picnic tables or, uh, pick a bench for a viewpoint, for a resting point. Um, all of those little red picnic icons there are locations where you have good views. So that, and they're accessible for vehicles, for maintenance. And this is really working out to be a, a pretty efficient park in terms of what I've dealt with in the past. And then, and then finally, I just want to, they, they've made it much clearer here where we've got gates identified for control so that the people know where you're supposed to come in, where you're not supposed to come in, when you're not supposed to be there. You can close the gates. Um, and then the parking lot, uh, and as, as we've described in a bit, we've got the Second Street, uh, City Park parking area available. Then there's going to be some frontage available we'll talk about. But I'm going to, I'm going to just pause here. Um, and if there's any questions from the council about the particulars of the trail system, I'm happy to answer them now. But Hector and I will both be available when he's done to answer any question you have.
Questions about trails yet?
Hear the rest of it?
No questions yet.
Okay. May, may, maybe mayor, if I, if I can, just to, uh, talk a little bit about the, the design philosophy for, for the property. We tried to be very cognizant that, uh, developing an open space property adjacent to residential uses, adjacent to folks' home, uh, and where they enjoy, you know, peace and quietude. Uh, we, 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 we wanted to be very sensitive to that. And obviously whenever you, uh, invite additional people, uh, to your property, uh, we, we recognize that, uh, it's an impact over existing conditions. But with that said, as Ken pointed out, the, the, there's an existing, uh, road behind Port Circle, the homes on Port Circle. The, we looked at that deliberately and said, we want to close that off for public access, but maintain it for, uh, fire ingress and ingress for, for public safety. Uh, likewise, we, uh, uh, recognize up in the, the northwest corner, the trail kind of dead ends and, and only leads to, uh, adjacent properties. Uh, deliberately, uh, Ken, understanding the recreational user experience, uh, that was one of the three trails he shows is an improved new trail to try to create a loop so that you're enhancing the recreational experience, but you're also minimizing the potential opportunities for, you know, going beyond the property owners or beyond the property boundaries. Uh, recognizing, you know, there, there's, there's going to be a need for, for, uh, other improvements like, like fencing and signage and so forth to help prevent that. Can't always control or modify all human behavior. Uh, but we, we deliberately, uh, sought to, uh, address that through, again, this, the, you know, Ken's experience with trail improvements, but also trying to be cognizant of the, the potential impacts on adjacent property owners. So that was just kind of the, uh, you know, sharing with council, the, the kind of the, uh, design thought that went into this. And, uh, I'll give it to Ken and, and his team. They, they literally walked all of these trails. Uh, I had the opportunity to only walk a portion of them and, uh, it, uh, you know, it's an amazing piece of property. But again, that's just a little bit of background, something for you to think about as you, you know, as you, as you mull this over, um, uh, th- this evening. I know we're going to hear from, from neighbors. I think, uh, you know, likewise, that, that first component, that trailhead access, we, we know we have to address, uh, uh, the, the requirements of the American with Disability Act guidelines. So, you know, we tried to leverage, uh, the, the, uh, city park parking and, you know, building and constructing a new, a new sidewalk, uh, to, to, to try to facilitate, uh, uh, being able to, you know, walk, but have it be, uh, you know, ADA compliant, uh, in, in a way that's, uh, trying to be mindful of the neighbors on, on, on foothills. So, you know, those, again, just kind of part of that design philosophy that we were, we were trying to seek, uh, or that we were utilizing when we were looking at these proposed improvements. So we'll kind of get back to that.
I, I have one quick question and probably either of you could answer it. So I know that there's the roads to be closed and the one nearest, uh, would be Port Circle would be left open for a fire road. The other ones, like, uh, the ones that would lead to Mr. Anderson's property that we're eliminating, you said you want them to go back to natural. Is that something that we can promote and will, and will promote?
So restoration is the, is a verb we'd probably use and for, and restoration or reclamation of the land. Um, in the, in this particular zone, um, it's reclaiming itself pretty rapidly. If you might, you might know what I'm trying to say. Things grow really well around here. Um, if you keep people off the property, uh, off, off the track that it's on, the grass grows, the, the trees grow. Um, what we do watch for are erosion problems, places where the road is trapping water. We'll make sure that that's taken care of before we back out of it and then keep people out. I, did I answer your question?
Pretty much.
Yeah. But we do enhance it, yes.
I guarantee you every, every person's worry in here is going to be the trespassers. Number one thing. And so I want to make sure that we, you know, the curious hiker isn't going to see an old trail and try to go up that road. I'd really like it to do as much as we could to reclaim it.
I have a saying called, make it easy to do the right thing and hard to do the wrong thing. We're going to make it really hard to do the wrong thing. That, that's the goal. I think, I hope that's clear.
That is Ken, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I may too, one of the items on the slide on the presentation, it's not longer here, uh, shows, uh, showed some funding there for, for fencing, uh, for fencing and some signage. And I know I spoke to some of the residents and that's one of the items that we spoke in the house that we need to address. Just to make sure that we have signage and fencing to, to protect our neighbors and to have everybody go out there and recreate safely without, hopefully without trespassing. So, and then just to make one comment on, on the difference between Porterfield Creek, oh wait for Mike, uh, uh, the difference between Porterfield Creek and Soda Springs Ranch that I personally like is the, the fact that at Porterfield Creek, I'll use today as an example, we had some, some trees that were down, uh, reported some trees down at Porterfield Creek. And we literally had to go hike, the staff, we had to hike up there because you can't get any equipment up there. So it took us a lo- a long time to, to pack our chainsaws and to climb up there and remove those trees out of the trails. And one nice thing I like about, uh, the Soda Springs Ranch, that all the ranch roads are wide enough to get equipment out there. You can get trucks, you can get, you can get, you can get my, you can get my chipper up there and ship some trees. Uh, so that, that's really, that's really a treat for us as far as maintenance, uh, in the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Go to the next.
Any other questions before they continue?
I just have, and I know it's going to come up, but, uh, one of the questions also was, I know we're going to try to utilize the, uh, Second Street Park parking lot, but I think everybody here knows is, uh, you get the beer league softball in there, you get anything going on at the park and that is filled immediately and Second Street is just packed. So if you take away that one section right there, kind of by the barbecues for the Lions Club barbecues, make that ADA. Nobody can park there. That's going to be even more overflow. So that's one of my big concerns is that parking. And I'm sure there's folks here that are, they're going to bring that up. But that's a, a big concern of mine is how are we going to facilitate all this, these people that want to use this?
And then the, the next slide, we'll, we'll, Mike, we'll, 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 uh, show a little bit. Oh, okay. So the, this, on this, uh, it's actually the slide after this, after this one. But, uh, uh, this slide right here. So on Foothill Boulevard, frontage improvements, this is what we're, what we're planning on doing is to create a soft entrance to the park at the dead end here of Foothill Boulevard. Um, where that yellow line, that yellow line that shows right there is, if my calculations are right, we're able to accommodate about 30, 30 to 35 parking spaces. Uh, and we're hoping and we're going to encourage folks to park here and, and enter the park this way. Uh, of course, that's, we, you know, we got to do some, as you can see, the, the amount there, we got to do some, we got to, we got to design and construct improvements to, to make this, to make this happen and advertise. And maybe this will alleviate some of the traffic flow from Second Street City Park. And, and of course for Second Street pretty, City Park, uh, entrance, we're also planning on doing some, some parking inside the park.
I'm just wondering if maybe on, when they do put the signage up for the entrance on the Second Street right there and incorporate into that sign, the option to go over to what you're talking about at the end where Foothill dead ends. That might help alleviate some or send people over there that don't know. They're just coming into town and they're like, hey, you know, I'm going to park at Second Street. And they got baseball going on or something. Gives them an option to go around and, and see that.
Absolutely. Yeah. That's, that's something we, we thought about. Also, you know, Vintage Meadows Park is a block away. So, so folks, we, we might add some additional signage. So folks, encourage people to, to park there at this, uh, Vintage Meadows Park, which is a block away. Uh, so that's, that's what the plan is for, and then the, the slide before that, Mike, just the sequoia.
We have one more question for you here.
Oh, good. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just curious, um, Kevin, I know you shared with me the outreach that we did to the community, uh, and the residents that live along there. Um, could you just go over what we did, uh, to bring them into the loop and maybe, um, explain that, um, we're not done having conversations with them yet, uh, as we get closer to the final details?
That's Councilmember Walter. Uh, Hector was kind enough to go and knock on all the doors on all the houses that are near the entrance on both North Foothill and, and South Foothill and Port Circle. And he had copies of the agenda. And I know we had many conversations with probably some of the folks who are here tonight. And we've been, uh, interacting with, with them as well. Uh, part of our, um, requirements for establishing this park is to have a community meeting, uh, baked into what we've, are suggesting is our, uh, funding request will be some money to accommodate that meeting, to get some, uh, maps and, and other things. So, uh, as you said, Councilmember Walter, we are going to, we are planning a community meeting, um, as well as Hector's, uh, direct outreach to the neighbors.
Yeah, I guess I want to emphasize the point that, uh, what we're asking tonight is support for the submittal of a letter that identifies the proposed improvements that we're discussing with council. Um, ultimately, the letter would go to, uh, if council supports it, uh, go to the District Board of Directors, which is also the Board of Supervisors for consideration. Ultimately, they're going to have to determine, uh, whether our request is consistent with their policy and at what level, uh, based on our request, they're going to, they're going to fund improvements. Uh, so there's, you know, there is a, uh, you know, subsequent process, review process by the board, uh, to, to look at more detail of our request. But, you know, at this point, we're just requesting council support to go ahead and submit that funding request. Uh, ultimately, the, um, the, the funding is on a reimbursement basis. And so as funds, you know, assuming they approve it, we'll, we'll have to request, uh, reimbursement from the county, uh, Ag District for, for the funding. So if for some reason we, council, once we go through the process and let's say, for example, uh, the community says, you know, we, we really don't want to improve the north section of Foothill Boulevard, uh, uh, north of Second Street. Um, that would be something we, we, we don't do. And we therefore don't request the, the funding to, to undertake that. So I know a little bit of it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse, but I think the intent here is to get the funding request in, uh, and, and, and as part of that funding, we'll, we'll be doing a lot more outreach. We really do want to hear from the neighbors and how, and get their perspective on, uh, on the design process. And we're, we're basing that very similarly on what we did with the Porterfield Creek Open Space. Uh, you know, we, in that case, we got the funding first and, and then we did the workshop and, 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 uh, in this case, we're requesting the funding, hopefully get approved. Uh, but as part of that, that's going to support our efforts to do, uh, to hold the workshop, to do the outreach, uh, do the environmental review. And, uh, uh, assuming we get support and agreement by, uh, by the community and council, um, you know, actually start, start, start the work as quickly as we can.
Thank you David.
So then as I understand it, we got to kind of shoot for the stars and then hone it down with what they actually give us.
Just, just to clarify, based on some early community input, one of the items in here is the, uh, completion of North Foothill Boulevard. Just currently bought a three-quarter of a street. So this would include, uh, sidewalk and gutter and perhaps more street section as well. And that's, that was number five on the list. And that was requested from a homeowner to price that out as well? Requested from someone in the community. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Anyone else? All right. I think we just have a couple more slides. So just the sequoia, right? Uh, so the preserve management, this is the slide where it talks about a little bit about the initial development and operating and maintenance preserve. This is where, uh, the, the item that we were discussing to possibly bring, hopefully ask them for some, uh, funding to, to hire some part-time staff for the, for initial, for, for roughly about three years to help us with the initial, with all the vegetation management and, uh, trail maintenance. So we're hoping to get some funding for that. And then as well as, you know, police department is going to be overseeing some of this, uh, some of this park. So we have some funding included on that. And then as well for, for some equipment. As we all know, you know, to be able to keep all that vegetation back, we need some, some funding for, to hire contractors, to buy some more equipment, some high, uh, high input flail mower out there to mow and to grade the roads. So this is where this, that, that slide, uh, that's what we're recommending. Again, we don't, like David mentioned, you know, we're kind of, we're hoping to get these funding. And, uh, yeah, that's the next slide.
There's just one more slide Hector, which is, uh, I mentioned the community meeting and then what we're asking the council to do by motion, um, authorize the signature by the mayor and submittal to the Sonoma County Ag and Open Space. So before we go any further, you guys might have to open up the public comment now. I think it'd be a good time. All right. So at this time, I'll open up to public comment. I know there's a lot of neighbors here who would like to speak first. Please come on up to the podium. This is, please state your name for us.
My name is Kedry-
My name is Kedrick Zanzi. I live at 509 West Second Street in Cloverdale. I have a few questions about the street you just presented. Um, I've heard, is there going to be camping, camping facilities in there for, open to the public in the future or?
So if you can, if you can finish your three-minute comments and they'll address it.
Oh, okay. And, and, uh, the, that little, uh, street at the end of, uh, at Foothill, the soft entry there, I don't know, uh, I believe the city, uh, owns up to the, uh, the, the guard in the road. And, uh, to get onto this property of this Soda Springs property, you're going to have to infringe on other properties. And another thing is, is there soda water up there? And, um, the, uh, the turn at, at Second Street, you know, you talked about, uh, putting, fixing that street up. That's only a, a partial of a street there, which is going to, something's going to have to be done. And also, uh, the part about, uh, putting Foothill all the way across from, from where, uh, that's soft entry thing over to Second Street. And, um, you know, if you were interested in doing that, I could probably, I might know somebody that might want to work with you. And, um, yeah, and the big, the biggest thing is fence, fencing it in so nobody gets hurt. And, and, um, yeah, there's, there's a lot to, uh, talk about. And is any of this open to the public? The, the, the public, uh, doesn't have any control of any of the plan or anything like that? It's just all, uh, you guys make it up and we accept it?
Is that it? I'm, I'm writing down all the questions you have, Kedrick, and then we'll kind of run through them when you're, that way we don't infringe on your time.
I guess I'll, I'll quit it that and give you, give you a chance to get going.
All right.
Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
So I'll run through them real quick. As for camping, as of now, there's no plans for camping. And as long as I'm here, I'll make sure that there's no plans for camping. That's not something that this city council or, uh, city has discussed. We, it was actually on the original plan, showed some campsites and we had them removed because we don't want it either. We totally understand and want to respect safety and the neighbors just for privacy. Uh, the Foothill going through, that hasn't been discussed on this project, uh, but if you would like to discuss it, it's something that the city is definitely open to. And then the plan, this plan right here, there has been some neighbor input, but this is more like picking out as much as we possibly can to ask or request the funding from the county and see what they're willing to pay for. And then we go to them and say, okay, look at, we have, let's say right now, I think the number's 2.2 million that we're asking for. If they come out and they say, okay, we're going to grant you 1.3 million, then you know we can't do everything that we've at, or, you know, put on the list. So we, then we come to the neighbors and say, okay, we have 1.3 million dollars, here's the have-to-dos, here's how much we have to spend on the needs. What do you guys want as, as your neighborhood? And, and that's actually a requirement for this, is to make sure we have all of your input on this. Does that answer all your questions, Kedrick?
And, and Mayor, if I can, just to add, I, I know there was a concern about infringing, I think the word was used on, on, uh, other properties. And part of the, the design cost that our city engineer developed for those Foothill Boulevard frontage improvement included, uh, a topographic survey, uh, and, um, uh, along with, you know, right-of-way survey work. So I, I couldn't tell you with any certainty exactly where all the blinds are, uh, right now, but, uh, part of the necessary work would be to, uh, do those topographic surveys. We do not encroach on private property without, uh, uh, discussions with the private property owner, any additional right-of-way that's sod is, 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 you know, done, uh, through, through, uh, discussion with the, with the property owners, uh, i- if it's, if it's needed. So we just want to ensure council, we're, we're not, uh, there, there's never a, a willful intent to encroach on, on private property, uh, and, but in order to, uh, make sure that we, we work within the confines of this, of the property, uh, i- it will be necessary, uh, to have more survey work done, uh, and to, you know, identify the property corners and make sure that, you know, the, the boundaries as we understand it are indeed the boundaries. And, and we, 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 we know that that needs to be done and embedded in this cost, this ask from the county is, uh, the, the cost to do that survey work.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to let the attendee know on Zoom that we are no longer taking Zoom comments virtually. Uh, the only way to comment is in person at this time. You can always submit comments to our, um, public comments at ci.cloverdale.ca.us if we can get them into the future packet. But unfortunately, we're not able to take your comment online, so I'm going to lower your hand. Just wanted you to be aware of why I'm doing that. Thank you.
She's a neighbor. I know who she is. She can reach out to me if, if she has a question for later. Any other public comments? Anyone else want to make?
My name is Dave Holt. I live here in Cloverdale. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for the presentation. Hector and Kevin. The, uh, I'm the one that made the request for, uh, Foothill Boulevard to be improved. I don't live there, I live over on North Washington, but I walk, uh, walk the city. And, um, I noticed that North Foothill and that little section isn't totally improved. So I, I don't believe the property to the north will ever be, in my lifetime, purchased and developed and the, uh, Foothill won't be improved in that section. And the city doesn't have the money to do it. So I felt that the best method would be take the, um, Open Space District to task and have them pay for it because they purchased the land based on it being, uh, developable and that infrastructure would be required. It would help with safety, it would help with traffic flow through, with pedestrians, with home values on North Foothill, those five or six homes, help our property tax base. And, um, also I think there's one other item there. There's a culvert, uh, at that entrance. I don't know if I should call it an entrance, but at the end of North, at the end of First, Second Street, there's a, just a culvert, looks like about a four-foot diameter galvanized pipe. I would hope that that is in our, um, plans to replace that and have it suitable for fire trucks to get over and also withstand flooding. And I think that was it and I'm, I'm all for no. Oh, I don't know what I want to say. I wonder how many people drive to Porterfield Creek versus walk. This park, this future park is very close to downtown. I imagine the number of people that are going to, uh, go up on it are going to be walking. I have my boots on. I walked here this evening from downtown. It's not that far. So I don't think parking is the nemesis that it needs to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to Dais. Any, any?
I think I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, great presentation. Uh, now, there is a next step. It's a recommendation by motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter. Does anyone want to make that motion? Two point, 2.2 million approximately, it's like 2.19 in change, yes, sir. And I can give you exact if you'd like it. And if you need to, if someone wants to make the motion, I can tell you what it would be. You by motion authorize the mayor to sign a letter addressed to Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District requesting the initial public access, operation and maintenance funding for Soda Springs Lighter Ranch Open Space Preserve. Do you want me to read the letter? Okay. Would anyone want to make that motion?
A motion to have, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign a letter addressed to Sonoma County Agricultural Preserve and Open Space District requesting initial public access, operation, maintenance, funding for Soda Springs Lighter Ranch Open Space Preserve.
Second to that motion.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes four zero with one absent. Now, Kevin, can you give us a rundown of timeframe or how this works from here? I sign the letter, it goes to Ag and Open Space and then?
Correct, and it has to get on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, which I heard is, takes a little bit of time, they're a little bit backed up. I know David might know more about that, but I had heard it's, it could be as much as 90 days out to get on their agenda.
Then once we get an answer, we'll be reaching out to the home, the property owners and neighbors. Perfect. Yeah, is there an expected date to be open? I know before it was 12 months, but Hector, that seems pretty aggressive.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's going to be, uh, critical that we, you know, make a number of improvements to the park before we, you know, fully open it to public access. Uh, with that said, we are thinking about doing some guided tours just to, uh, provide a, you know, uh, opportunity for the community, uh, to, to be able to access the, the property safely. Um, and we'll be, we'll be talking about that at the Planning Sustainability Subcommittee, uh, in a little bit more detail, but, uh, it probably won't get open, uh, in, you know, it, it, it's going to probably take us a little longer than a year to get it, get it fully opened, uh, to, to the, for community access.
Perfect. Any environmental review takes? Yeah, environmental review is a six-month minimum. Thank you. All right, moving on to I three, Proposed Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance Direction.
All right, well, Mayor, I'm just going to turn this over to our, uh, city attorney, Alex Mog. Uh, Alex, uh, presented, made a presentation to our Finance and, and Admin, um, Finance, Admin and Police Subcommittee, uh, earlier this month to seek some, uh, policy direction from, from the Subcommittee. And, uh, based on that direction, we're bringing this forward, uh, for, uh, council, uh, direction on development of a, uh, rent control ordinance for our three mobile home parks. So Alex, turn it over to you.
Thanks, David. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, some of you have heard some of this information before, but just so the whole council has it, I'm going to run through, run through some slides, um, when they get up. But right now, Cloverdale's municipal code, um, there is a chapter actually establishing mobile home rent control. And it provides that you can't have any increase at all unless you go through this process. And that ordinance was adopted in 1986. It hasn't been enforced in, in many, many years, um, or perhaps ever. We, we looked through city records going back to 2000 and couldn't find any record of it. So we aren't familiar exactly with what happened, um, but even if it was still being enforced, you know, it's very out of date, um, parts of it are unenforceable and it's inconsistent with a lot of our colleague cities in the, in Sonoma County. Um, and so there were, you know, a few months ago, some members of the public reached out, uh, made comments at public meetings, um, and from that, the Finance, Admin, Police Subcommittee provided direction to the city attorney to prepare a new, uh, mobile home rent control ordinance. Uh, we, we have done that. These ordinances are, are quite lengthy. Um, I, I think I mentioned in the staff report, you know, like the county's, City of Santa Rosa, it's like 17 pages long. They got a lot of detail in them, law definitions, but there's usually just a handful of sort of key issues, um, that, you know, really are at the heart of these ordinances. So tonight, we want to get feedback from you on those key issues before we put them into the draft. Um, and we previously, earlier this month, got feedback from the Subcommittee on those issues, so we'll go over what their recommendations are as well. Um, just by way of background about how rent control works, you know, it is, courts have said this is legal to control rents to prevent excess rent increases, but these types of ordinances must provide a mechanism to ensure that landlords receive a just and reasonable return on their property. And there's a specific definition that we don't have to go over. Um, but so how most rent control ordinances work is there's a standard rent increase that a landlord, a park owner can charge each year. Um, and then if they feel that isn't providing them with a fair and reasonable return, they can go through a separate process to get a, um, extra increase on top of that. And, and you know, you have to, they'll have to justify and go through that process, but it is available. So, um, mobile home parks differ, uh, significantly from traditional units, um, in a couple ways. So in, in a mobile home park, there, there's a park owner who owns the park and all of the spaces and then rents out those spaces. And that's what, uh, mobile home rent control does. It controls or limits the increases on those space rents. Uh, and then on, on those space rents, people put their mobile home units, um, which are usually, but not always owned by the resident. Parks sometimes own those as well, but usually they're owned by the residents. Um, and what, uh, you know, we call them mobile homes, but you know, if you look at the mobile homes around, um, town, these, these units are not mobile. Um, it's, you know, significant cost to move them, often it would just amount to them being destroyed if you move them. So there are, um, mobile home parks have to register with, uh, the California Department of Housing and Community Development and they are listed on, on, you can look up on their website. And if you go and you look up Cloverdale, they have a lot of parks that aren't actually in the city, but are out in unincorporated areas around here. But there are three, um, within the city that are up there, um, listed up there, uh, and they have differing levels of number of, uh, mobile homes within them. How, um, a mobile home, uh, rent control usually works is, and, and, you know, this would be, uh, unless the council provided. Otherwise, we would, any, uh, park that has a mobile home in it, you know, two, two or more spaces in it would be subject to this ordinance. And then any unit that's parked on one of those spaces, you know, for more than nine months would be, uh, subject to this provision. So, you know, if someone's really a mobile home and it's an RV that comes and stops there for a little bit of time, they're not subject to this ordinance, but when they're, um, you know, become permanent residents, we would have our definition unless the council directed. Otherwise broadly to say, you know, any structure used for human habitation on one of these spots. So to, tonight, we are seeking direction on, um, four issues and then relate to the ordinance and then the fifth issue, um, for perhaps a separate date if the council is interested in that. But it'd be allowable rent increase, uh, whether or not the ordinance will have vacancy control, what body will be the rent review body for those special increases that are requested, and then the base rent date, which is sort of what's the starting point. Um, and then we'll also talk about other possible protections for mobile home parks, um, for, that would be in the zoning code. So we'll walk through each one of those a little bit more now. Um, the, and, and this is a slide in your packet and this information is also in the agenda doc. Perfect. Um, the public at least can see now what's showing is the chart with all of, uh, allowable rent increases in Sonoma County. Um, so the allowable increase is the amount that's, you can raise your rent automatically, um, once per year. Um, it is, and it can be a flat percentage, it could be a percentage of CPI. What we see, um, mostly in Sonoma County is that people have set their percentage at, you know, three or four percent increase per year or 70% of CPI, whichever is less. Um, and there's some fluctuation there, but so in, in a year where CPI is low, you know, if it's 2%, you'll be able to do 70% of CPI. In a year where CPI is very high, um, you know, the last few years when it was maybe 78%, 70% of that would be more than 4%. So that would be the, um, the limit would be 4%. So what the Subcommittee recommended, uh, was 3% or 75% of CPI, whichever is, is less. And then vacancy control is whether or not a park owner can, um, raise rents when there's a vacancy. So, um, you think about it in the apartment context, someone moves out, uh, they can raise the rent. In, in state law for apartments, state law prohibits vacancy control. Like, uh, by law, a city cannot restrict like an apartment owner's ability to raise the rent. But that is not true for, for mobile homes. We can have vacancy control, and so there's a couple different ways to, to structure that if it's something the council wants. One is no vacancy control. You just raise it to rent wherever you want, whenever there's a turnover in tenants. Another way to do it is vacancy control following eviction. Some cities have done that in order to decrease, to try to not encourage evictions. If someone's evicted, you can't, you can't use an eviction to try to get to increase your rent. So you might say, we're not going to allow special increases when that happens. You'll have to wait until your next annual increase comes up. There's also vacancy control for in-place transfers. So that might be, an in-place transfer is, we talked about mobile homes aren't really mobile. You might have it be so that if you're keeping that unit in place, there's no rent increase. Otherwise, rent increase is allowed, you know, if, if you're moving the mobile home off and someone new is coming in. Because a lot of times, these are, you know, being sold from resident to resident, you know, and, and they'll enter into new leases with the park. And then another option is vacancy control for, and vacancy control for certain in-place transfers. So, you know, maybe if you sell it to a third party, the park can increase their rent, but if you're transferring it to, you know, your son or, or someone who already lives in the unit with you, then there's no vacancy control. That, that's pretty, excuse me, then there's no rent increase possible. So this was a, probably the item that the Subcommittee spoke the longest about. I'm just thinking through some of the issues. There was a member of the public there too who brought up some issues. One thing that was thought about was, you know, if we want to ensure park owners obtain a fair return, if they're allowed to charge new residents more, they, that means they're making more money. They have less justification to go for that fair return and then increase rents for everyone who's in the park. So that was just one consideration that was raised. Ultimately, what the Subcommittee decided is a couple things. They wanted no, a no rent increase when there's an in-place transfer or following an eviction. If a unit is being moved out and someone else is moving in, they, it says ten percent on the slide, but if I recall correctly, actually, the committee wasn't quite sure. They said five to fifteen percent. In for reference, Sonoma County, of all the cities, there are just a handful that have any, any type of vacancy control. There are two or three that have vacancy control when there's an in-place transfer and try to limit, limit that. And others may have vacancy control for sort of transferring it to a spouse or a child. So that was the recommendation on that level item from the Subcommittee. And then the next issue is the Rent Review Board, and thank you, Mike, for, for going along. And there's a couple different ways to, to do that. One is this, many cities in Sonoma County use and partner with the Sonoma County Community Development Commission, and they'll have a process, and this will be built into the ordinance of essentially when a park owner wants to do a greater increase than what would otherwise be allowed, they have to send notice to, to all the park residents. There's opportunity to sort of meet and confer and have a meeting about it and to share information. If the park residents don't agree with the extra rent increase, they can submit a petition. If enough of them submit the petition, then the Sonoma County Community Development Commissioner, the director of the commission would appoint a neutral arbitrator to hear the case. That would be binding. That arbitrator would look at, you know, the financial records and make a determination. And some, sometimes you, you go through that process because they think they're not making a fair return. Sometimes they go through that process because the roads are all broken in the park, and we need to invest to replace them. And so in some of those situations, you find that park owner, park residents might be willing to pay for that, whereas another, they won't, and, you know, you, you see all different levels. Another option is for the city manager to appoint a neutral hearing officer. There are, you know, attorneys, former judges who sort of specialize in doing this, and you can hire, have a list, and then as these come in, hire that. And the last, just so the city's aware of all, the council's aware of all the options, is some of the bigger cities like San Francisco or Berkeley have boards of either appointed or elected members from the, the community. And I'll just be frank that that would be, I would recommend not doing that. That's an expensive endeavor because those people usually don't also have the, aren't CPAs or have the financial, 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 excuse me, expertise. So you end up having to hire the neutral person to assist them anyway and do that work for you. So what the Subcommittee recommended is to use the Sonoma County CDC. There was, the committee recommended some, requested to get some more information about the cost of what that would be, and also if the CDC would be able to accommodate doing those hearings and meetings in Cloverdale rather than down in Santa Rosa. And we reached out to them on those issues, unless Kevin heard today. Yeah, we haven't heard back from them, but we'll continue to follow up to get firmer answers on that. Just so the council is generally aware of how the costs work for this program like this. You know, the costs can differ depending on, you know, how proactively the city wants to enforce it. You know, if we're going to be reviewing everyone's rent and doing that, that, that takes a lot of staff time. A lot of people just have, some cities just have these ordinances in place, and then it's really up to the tenant to enforce it. If they get a rent increase that's too high, you know, that's something they would enforce. Maybe go to, hire their own attorney, go to legal aid, or if, or if they are facing an eviction, that would be a defense in an eviction that they're getting an illegal rent increase. The city can adopt a fee and charge it to parks to recover its costs if that's desired. The council should know that under state law, parks are automatically allowed to pass along fifty percent of that fee to the residents. So if the city created a fee for the parks, that would automatically create a increase in the rent to some level of, for, for residents. So, next slide, please. And then the base rent date, this is the last major issue regarding the ordinance. Base rent is the, there's a date, and that becomes the base rent. And that's the rent on which you can, you know, each year increase by whatever the annual rent increase is. It's not uncommon for the base rent date to be earlier than the effective date of the ordinance. And the, why some cities do that is, you know, if you go through a public process, in some cities, they've seen, well, park owners raise the rent when they know this is coming. And that sort of defeats the purpose of the rent increase. Not saying that would happen in Cloverdale, just saying that's something other cities have experienced. So they, they're set it a few months before, and that becomes the base rent. So any rent charged in that period of time, in that interim, is, is legal. You know, there's no refunds needed, but once the ordinance went into effect, prospectively, that rent would have to get lowered back to the, you know, the amount that it was on the base date. So what the committee recommended was January first. This year to be that date, but the committee did note that if this process takes too long, you know, draws out for, you know, months and months, they might want to reevaluate. You know, their recommendation was based on the assumption that this ordinance would go into effect relatively soon. Then the last thing to mention is sort of a separate issue, but wanted the council's feedback on this as well. There has been some discussion and requests to consider other non-rent-related protections for mobile home residents. And those, where you typically find those are in the zoning code. So you could have a zoning code, for example, rezone the land that's a mobile home park, so the only use it can be for is a mobile home park. And that way, that residents don't have to worry that the property might be sold and become a, you know, single-family residential development or a, you know, apartment building or something like that. State law has a process already to go through for when you close a park and all the tenants have to move, but some cities create their own additional processes that, you know, require some additional steps on that. If the council wants to pursue that, that's just something I would recommend we handle on a separate track from the ordinance. It, it can be complicated, among other reasons, it has to go through the planning commission, so it's just a longer process, so it, and sort of separate issues, and so it'd probably be good to handle if the council wants to, once this ordinance is in place and sort of implemented to then go back to that. Because naturally, implementation, even if we're not going to be proactively enforcing it, it's the type of thing where we probably want to create, send a letter to all the residents, create an FAQ document, those sorts of things. But then after that, return to that ordinance if that's something the council wants. So that is everything we are seeking direction on from the council tonight. You know, you have the recommendations from the committees, so I think probably, Mayor, unless you feel differently, if there's something that you, if we don't hear from you on issue, we'll assume you agree with the Subcommittee. And then, of course, we haven't gone in a direction, actually, from the full council to proceed with this ordinance. So if that, you know, I'm assuming we have that direction, but if they, you feel, you know, it's not something we should proceed with, of course, please, please share that as well.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Councilmember Walter, would you like to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex, there was one more topic that the Subcommittee talked about, and that was debt service from a new park owner.
Yeah.
And how that could not be included in any rent increases.
Yeah. So the, when you, so you can automatically do your rent increase, and then let's say you want to, you say, I'm not making enough money. That process and why these ordinances are so long is they'll define, okay, you know, fair return is that your expenses exceed your, excuse me, your income exceeds your expenses by a certain amount. And there'll be detailed definitions, like what can you count as an expense? And so like, you know, your maintenance expenses, your staff costs, your property taxes are all things you can count, but we would prepare the ordinance to say, you know, your, your mortgage financing costs are not something you can, your interest costs are not something you can claim as an expense.
Councilmember Morgan's turn.
I read everything that the Police and Finance Subcommittee came up with, and I agree with all of it. I think the ideas are great and the protections are really important. And I also would really like it if the mobile home parks could be rezoned so that people have the security of knowing that they're not going to get evicted and it's going to turn into a campground or something else.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'm kind of in the same, going through this, and, and I like, I like all the recommendations, and I know you guys talked about this quite a bit, but I'm, I'm in agreeance with those, with the recommendations from the Subcommittee also.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know we're down one council member this evening, but I'm just wondering if we should take up the topic of do we want to proceed with this new ordinance, or do we just want to let it lay? Like Alex had said, only two council members made the statement of bringing it forward, but we didn't hear from the rest of the council yet. So I, I don't know if you want to do that first.
Let's ask that right now. Councilmember Morgan's turn. Is this something that you would want to pursue?
I would definitely want to pursue this.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to pursue.
So then with that, you guys mind if I open it up to public comment? All right, I'd like to open this up to public comment right now. Does anyone here want to make a public comment regarding rent control on mobile home parks? Anything we've discussed under this topic? Just come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Rick Thomas, and I'm the owner and manager of Briarwood Mobile Home Park. I've been the manager since nineteen eighty-one. No park owner has been notified or contacted about this. My attorney contacted the vice mayor yesterday and was provided no information on this at all.
Sir?
Hi, I'm Trudy Folsom. I'm coming late to this topic. I just have a couple of questions. Has the committee explored other sources of financial assistance for these residents who are at risk, rather than putting the burden exclusively on the three park owners? And did I understand correctly that included in this is pretty much preventing them from even selling the property to get out of the burden of these responsibilities?
Thank you, Trudy. Alex, would you like to answer those two questions? Because...
Yeah, so, you know, the direction from the committee was to review, prepare a new ordinance, so I can't speak to other financial assistance that, you know, the city could consider. This particular ordinance doesn't, that will be prepared, won't have any land use controls in it. That would be a separate one. Even then, it would not prevent a park owner from selling the park. It would just prevent the park from being used for another use. Just, it's not unusual for something to be zoned for just one specific use. And I think there was one, was there a question about noticing? I, I can speak that we, you know, this is just the first meeting, and that was something that Subcommittee discussed, and the recognition from the Subcommittee is that this would be a multi-meeting process and that notices would be sent to the community, you know, once there was sort of an ordinance to be shared and reviewed.
Did that answer, Trudy? Okay.
Mayor, can just add a little bit of context to, to this discussion tonight. We currently, I mean, when I say we, meaning the city, has rent control requirements on the books as we speak. And part of the reason why we brought this forward was at the request of a park resident who was concerned about its enforceability. So the, the, the rent restrictions that are in, are on the books now are, actually, in my opinion, more restrictive than what we're proposing to do in terms of develop, developing a new updated ordinance, recognizing that the property owners, the park owners are entitled to a fair return. And so we're, we're trying to, you know, address some of the key policy questions that come along with updating or preparing a, a, a new ordinance that would replace our existing one. And, but in my opinion, in some regards, it's less restrictive because no rent increases are permitted right now unless it goes to a rent control board. And so basically, one could argue that, that, that's a very restrictive stance. But, you know, times have changed since that ordinance was adopted, and it's an opportunity to, to update it, to reflect some consistency with, you know, other, what other cities in Sonoma County have adopted, and also address what are some key policy provisions to address the, the concerns of the park owners, because they, they are entitled to a reasonable return. But it's also said that, you know, one of the goals of the ordinance is, is to, you know, protect one of our remaining sources of affordable housing in our community. And so, you know, it, it's a balancing act, and we, and we recognize that. So, you know, this, this wasn't just brought forward because staff thought it was a good idea. We had a resident concerned about rents for his mother who relied... We had, uh, a resident, uh, concerned about rents for his mother who relies upon, uh, mobile home park as a, as a source of shelter for, for his mom. So, you know, we, we took that into account. We had a lot of discussions at the finance subcommittee. Ultimately, if council gives us direction to go forward and draft an ordinance, the draft ordinance would be required to be publicly noticed. And we would endeavor to, to reach out to all the park, uh, owners to ensure that they, they have a copy of the draft ordinance. A public hearing would be required, so it would provide more opportunity to speak to, uh, you know, the merits of adopting an ordinance. Uh, but again, we're, we're here to seek, seek council's direction on, on, you know, redrafting and amended and restated MUNI code to address, uh, rent control for, for mobile homes.
And when was the current ordinance written? 1986, was that what I had heard?
That's where it appears to be from.
Sure, right.
That's the notation in our municipal code.
And it says no rent increases unless going to a board?
Yeah, you have to go to the board that's supposed to be appointed by the city council to, to get the increase. So, I mean, obviously that, to the extent it, it, that would even be legal, would create a huge burden on the city of having to constantly every year hear those hearings.
So even if this doesn't end up going through, we need to do something about that.
Correct. And, and that's actually when we went to the, uh, subcommittee, um, at the time, that was an option. We said, do we just want to repeal this ordinance and say we don't need rent control? Let's make it clear what the rules are. Um, and that, the direction from the committee and the committee at the time was, uh, Councilmember Bagby was on that subcommittee at the time. So even though she's not here, she was at the time supportive of, of moving forward with preparing a new ordinance, a rent control ordinance.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Please come forward. Get your name for the record, please.
Excuse me. Thank you, council. My name is Salo Londonio and I'm with WMA. Uh, we are the association, the industry association that works with owners and operators of mobile home parks in California. We do training, education, advocacy, et cetera. I'm here today to urge you to communicate with your housing providers and work with them on something that's sustainable in the long run. Cloverdale has already had a rent control ordinance as your city manager has, has stated. Uh, in the past, the city has already, has also been involved in lawsuits with, uh, park owners. To the extent that park owners have tried to communicate with the city over the past few years, uh, it's been a, a black hole. They, their answers, uh, they never get the answers that they need. Essentially, the, 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 uh, the, the position that the city has a, a rent control ordinance, but it's not enforceable is, it doesn't, doesn't matter to the park owners because the way that they have operated their parks is they've operated their parks under the, the assumption that the city does have a rent control ordinance and it follows the same standard as the Sonoma County ordinance. Every single, uh, the, the ordinance in Sonoma County has been updated just as of a couple of months ago and, and as the same way that they have always been in the, in the past. Park owners that follow the Sonoma County ordinance, regardless of where they are, know that the Sonoma County ordinance has been changed and have, have been operating accordingly. With that said, uh, the mobile home industry, industry is complex, but the economy of rent control is pretty clear. It may control rent costs for the current residents, but it does artificially inflate the value of these deteriorating units. They are deteriorating units, uh, driving the price of these homes completely out of reach of working-class families. You've already received correspondence from one of the park owners, uh, local park operators who is very active in our industry and he has in fact, uh, been a president of our association in the past. Cloverdale is, is, is fortunate that it has park owners such as, such as this one that, that care about their communities. And as he mentioned in this letter, one, as you guys debate the aspects of what is the next rent control ordinance should be like, um, there is an aspect that is very important to park owners and will, uh, and if you guys make this decision the wrong way, as some of your neighboring cities have done, you're going to go down a path that you cannot, not come back from, uh, unless you spend a lot of money, both in court and the park owners, the residents and the city will suffer. So I just ask you to please take the issues of vacancy decontrol very seriously. It is, it is, uh, this, the, as has been explained, the ability to, to set space rent to market rate when a resident vacates their unit. It's essential for the operator's ability to maintain a sustainable level of rent without forcing the city and the park owners to go into, into hundreds of thousands of dollars of litigation. Um, the issue of fair rate of return is one that takes place in court. And it's, and it costs you money and it costs the park owners money and ends up raising the rents on, on residents. So I just ask you to please listen to your housing providers. I'm also here if you have any questions about how the mobile home industry works. If you have questions about the ordinances, I've been involved in every single ordinance amendment over the past year in Sonoma County. And, um, I, I would just say that there are some very good examples of what you guys should do and some very bad examples. Don't follow the lead of the city of Petaluma, which is now in a complete toxic mess between their residents and their park owners and the threat of a closure of a park is real. So please, I'm here, I know that Rick is here, Andy has communicated with you guys, uh, remotely and I can answer any questions, but I please just urge you to talk to them. None of them, you guys haven't talked to them.
Clarifying question for you.
Yeah.
You said these actions can raise the, the renters' increase. How is, how does that work?
What one?
If we're, if we're controlling the percentage that it goes up, how are we pricing them out of the market?
Because what you're doing is, what, sorry, those are two different questions. When you're pricing people out of the market, you're doing that because rent control artificially inflates the, the value of those deteriorating units, these mobile homes that are worth maybe $70,000 or $100,000, depending on when they were built, are selling for $250,000, depending on where they're, they're, they're located in. That's the value of rent control. It is keeping working families out of your community, not because they can't afford a $20 rent increase, but because they can't afford spending $150,000 more on their mobile home. That's the issue of pricing people out. When I say that you're, you're, the rate of, the, 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 the fair rate of return hearings, what ends up happening is, let's say somebody, a, a, a park owner wants to raise rents $15 and the city says no. The park owner then has to go to a fair rate of return hearing in which the, the decision has been taken out of the hands of the park owner, it has been taken out of the hands of the city. And then the park owner can ask for as much of a, of a rate, a rent increase as he wants or as she wants. And it is then up to, uh, the, the, the arbitration, the litigation to decide how much of that will, will be awarded. And it can be as much as $100, so much more than what the park owner originally asked for. It is completely, uh, it, it is the, the, the epitome of instability. Residents will not know what their rents will be from one year to another.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Bring it back to the desk.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, um, Rick, I'm really sorry that, um, you, you didn't have a heads up about this meeting. This is the initial meeting. But what I'd like to suggest, Mr. Mayor, is if we, uh, return this item to the admin and police subcommittee, uh, meeting and, um, invite our park owners to that meeting and have that meeting primarily revolve around what are we going to do here? You know, get their input firsthand and then bring it back to the city council.
Okay. Thank you. But, Councilmember?
I think if we do refer back to the subcommittee, then we need to have some renters at that meeting also, so that they also, you know, can have a voice at that meeting. Yeah, but I mean, if we're inviting the park owners, I think we need to put an invitation out to the renters as well.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilmember Walter. I think there's a lot of information here and maybe we do need to kick it back down to the subcommittee and, and hear the voices of the owners and, and get some more input on this before we move forward with the decision.
So, so just to clarify from the, the council, um, we could prepare the draft ordinance based on the direction on the items you, you stayed tonight and then use that as the sort of talking point for this meeting, um, and provide notice to, uh, it's easy enough to notify the, the three park owners. We can contact them. They're, they're, you know, some of them are here and also their addresses are on file with HCD. Um, the residents of the park, how would you like them to be? We, we may be able to post, we may or may not be able to post notices on those, uh, in those parks, letting them know. We could also just post it, you know, uh, however we normally send out, you know, on our website if that's.
Kevin, you want to, you want to make a suggestion on that?
You know, I, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to start over and not bring a draft of where we want to start until we sit down and talk to the owners and get their input. You, you, you gave us a very nice presentation with bullet points, you know, reviewing those bullet points with, with the park owners and the residents. I think more the park owners than anything because they're the ones with the biggest investment in this situation. And, um, like, uh, City Manager Kelly said, you know, we want everybody, we want the park owners to make an income and we want the renters not to be gouged. I mean, that's true whether it's a, a mobile home or an apartment down the street. But I'd like to just sit down with the, with the park owners, lay out what we're trying to accomplish, have your bullet points and let's talk to them. My feelings.
Well, yours as well?
I still want the renters to be invited. I think that's important.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That is the direction? And send it back to the subcommittee?
So just to make sure we're, we're, I understand correctly, we're sending back to the subcommittee, basically almost like we redo that last subcommittee meeting, but we'll send out notices to the, the residents and figure out a way to communicate with the residents and send notices to the park owners.
As much as we can with the residents. I don't want to guarantee it right here, so.
And for, for reference, the next, uh, finance, admin and police subcommittee is a Monday, March 4th. It's the, it's the first Monday of the month and, uh, we, we could certainly, uh, put a, a note in our newsletter, encourage, uh, park owners, I mean, park, uh, renters to, to attend or to, you know, be apprised of that. It is, uh, broadcast on YouTube as well, uh, and Zoom though, uh, under Zoom, we're, uh, not providing opportunities for public comment at this point.
So then with this, there probably won't be enough room in our, our meeting. We're going to have to suggest a new location for that meeting. Send that out. Absolutely. Don't need to decide now, just, just keep that in mind. Yes, Councilman Morganstern?
What if we did a town hall before we had that subcommittee meeting? And that way we do it in a place where there's room for the residents and the park owners to ask questions?
Two separate things. The town hall and, and the subcommittee meeting would be two separate things.
Is that too much?
Have good direction? All right. Moving forward to the next item. Let's see here. Subcommittee reports are online. City manager report?
No reports, Mayor.
City attorney report? Thank you. Councilmember reports? Great, Citrus Fair this week and please come visit. Any future agenda items? Well, if I, I think I said it last meeting, but I want to make sure. The Potter Valley Project, the E.L. Russian, I want to try to get that whenever we can.
Absolutely. I, I'm, I'm working on that and I could find a date that works for the presenters.
I appreciate it. Just want, don't want it to get lost before it's too late. All right. With nothing else for the good of the order? All right. Meeting adjourned at 8:20. Thank you all for being here.